All right. Good evening and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, November 18th, 2021, 6:00 PM. We're in a call meeting in order to ask everybody to stand, stand to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is a nation, under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of minutes. November 4th, 2021, regular meeting. If there are no objections, the minutes will approve. Approval of requisitions, November 4th, 2021, amount by $50,769.88 if there are no objections, but it's approved. Approval accounts payable for November 10th, 2021, $519,724.67 if there are no objections, that is approved. Remember, at November 18th, 2021, an amount of $33,264.57 if there are no objections, that is approved. For approval of manual checks, November 11th, 2021, an amount of $118,682 if there are no objections, that is approved. Also for manual checks on November 19th, 2021, an amount of $234,991.6 there are no objections, that is approved. Payroll, November 10th, 2021, now $263,265.7 if there are no objections, that is approved. We'll move on to item one, Angie Banks' approval of his honorations. I think Angie is most likely online, I think.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I have three exonerations. The first one is in our 2021 personal property book, Charlestown District. The taxpayer did not own the 2009 Saturn, July 1st, 2020. Assessed value, 2,500, tax amount, $60.73. Taxpayer is David Ogden Ball, ticket number 300497.
I'll move to approve this honoration, ticket number 300497. I have a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
The next one is in our 2021 personal property book, Charlestown Corporation. The vehicle was not owned by the lease company, July 1st, 2020. It was a 2020 Infiniti, assessed value, $26,000, tax amount, $759.51. The lease company is Nissan Infiniti LT, ticket number 306748.
This honoration for ticket number 306748. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
This last one is in our 2021 land book, Harpers Ferry District. Map seven, parcel 5.2, described as lot number four, brackets, addition Fritz. This is an erroneous assessment. Mr. Barrett purchased it at the auditor's land sale, and the property is actually owned by the United States government. So the tax amount of $303.66 for the 2021 tax bill, and there's also a tax amount for $302.78 for the 2020 back tax bill. The first ticket number is 10463, which is the 2021 bill. The second ticket number is 10462, which is the 2020 back tax bill.
Okay. Thank you. I'll move to ticket number one, 10463, 2021, for exoneration, as well as 10462, which is the back taxes. Motion, both those are my motions. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. You can't sell government land. I guess they better pay their taxes. All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number two, Matthew Harvey, prosecuting attorney, discussing of staffing needs and request for approval of hire for employees. Good, Matt. We can't hear you, sir.
Because you're self-muted, Matt.
Okay, how about now?
Yes, sir. There you go.
Very good. Okay, so I have two open positions that I wish to fill tonight. Would you like me to take those individually or both at the same time?
We will need two separate motions, so if you want, yes.
The first, her name is Autumn Olsch, and is Jessica there? I can email her the names with the spelling later on. And she, Autumn is, this is, we've had a very beneficial relationship with Blue Ridge, and she was an intern in our office this past semester, and she's graduating here in the next couple of weeks to a month with a two-year degree in paralegal studies. And she's done such a good job that we had an opening, and she'd like to come and work full-time. Again, this is our third person that we've hired as from an intern, specifically from Blue Ridge Community College in the paralegal studies. And it's really nice when you got a good feel of how this person will work with everyone and what their skill sets are. And we really think that she's going to do a fantastic job. She's local, and her positions would include a lot of data entry and working with the magistrate court division to prepare all those files in litigation. And her starting salary would be $30,000. This is budget neutral. It's an old position that has been around since before, before I even took office, and we're just, I'm just seeking to replace, slot her into that position.
Matt, can you, can you tell me her last name again?
Yeah, it's almost silent. It's U-L-S-H.
Olsch, okay. All right, sounds good.
What would be the effective date of her employment?
Monday.
Okay.
So that is with me, I'm counting, sorry. The 11/22/21, right? All right, I'll go ahead and move approval of hire of Autumn Olsch for $30,000. Effective date will be November 22nd, 2021.
That's him.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead.
Okay, I have one more. The next one is for a position that was created prior to COVID. Due to the hiring freeze, I was never able to slot someone in there. And then, then when the hiring freeze was taken away, it was, took a little bit of time to find the right candidate. I'm here now telling you that we do have the right candidate, and it's Mary Espinoza. And she brings with her 31 years of experience in the legal system, including working for a judge for the last, since 2007. I can tell you that working for a judge is one of the most dynamic and fast-moving positions in the legal world. It's like an air traffic controller. You're juggling, the judge is very busy dockets, and you have, you have to interact with all the defense attorneys, plus the prosecutors, plaintiff's attorneys, defense attorneys, to get everybody into court on time. Plus, she has a tremendous amount of experience with drafting orders and other legal documents. So it's very exciting, and it's very rare to get someone with that much experience. And we're very, very pleased and excited about adding her to the office. Now, this is a, this is a $40,000 position, and her duties at the office will be as an executive administrative assistant and working a lot with me and working a lot with our grand jury, preparing cases in anticipation of grand jury, which is also a very dynamic endeavor that requires a lot of, someone be able to do a lot of tasks in a very timely and efficient way. And it'll be tremendous benefit to the office, sir.
And her effective date?
Would be 12/1/2021.
All right, thank you. I'll move to approve, let me ask you this one quick question. This is budget neutral, I think you said.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. It is. That position was slotted for $40,000, and it is budget neutral, both these hires.
Okay. All right, just making sure. All right, I'll go ahead and move to approve the hire of Mary Espinoza with an amount of $40,000. Effective date will be December 1st, 2021. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the commission's support.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number three, Tom Hanson, grant award and part-time hire failed. Who was here, sir?
I have two items in front of you today. First is a signature, approval and signature of grant award, Homeland Security, state Homeland Security grant for $7,500. We applied for many more items through the Homeland Security, but I guess because of COVID, a lot of other agencies did too. What was approved from my agency was bullet resistant fields for my SRT team to be able to approach homes that are under fire. Again, $7,500, $7,400, and that's the only items that were approved by the state Homeland Security.
Okay.
And I see here it does not require a match, as I.
No, ma'am. It's this, this is, this is
Not the time we like.
This is just, just, just a grant. Yes.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the $7,400 grant from Homeland Security. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
The second item in front of you is the hiring of another part-time bailiff. This would be budget neutral, would be within, in my part-time or my budget, court security budget. My chief bailiff needs more manpower. This is a female, had lots of law course experience. We've only had one female that was a bailiff, and she asked to be taken off the schedule as of the first of the month. And the chief bailiff gave her a time, a time of the month to say, decide whether she wants to come back or not. So this would be, if she decides not to come, this will be the only female bailiff. So, and we definitely need it. It would be a $13 an hour starting pay, which is our typical starting pay for bailiffs. And again, this would just fall under my, my court security bailiff lineup.
What's her name?
Her name is Jennifer Nicole Liel.
Deel.
Beal, Beal. The D is very, the D is very, is very, almost not existed on her application.
So you're saying her start date would be 12/1, or?
I think it'd be Monday, immediately, immediately.
Okay. All right. I'll move to approve the hire of part-time bailiff Jennifer Deel, 13,000, to start immediately. Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It is budget neutral, correct?
It's, yes. It's a part-time position. There's no benefits. It's just her coming to work, and it's out of my, my court security budget.
I just wanted to clarify.
They usually stay in budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
Oh, we just did a second, sorry.
Yeah, so he has.
I asked a question.
He has a question. Any others, any other questions? All right. All in favor say aye. Most, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom.
I need your signature here and the other yellow pad is.
Sorry, very much. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number four, finance director, high mark, one-time premium credit issued. Discuss options for a complete portion of the premium and then F Y, review of F Y 22 financials as a temporary. Go ahead, man.
All right, so we were notified, Mark, that they have provided us with a one-time health insurance premium credit. The total credit to the county is about $197,000. Of that, $167,000 offsets the county's portion of the insurance premiums, and about $1,000 of that is distributable to employee paid deductions. The Department of Labor has not issued any guidance that specifically addresses how employers should handle COVID-19-related premium credits under ERISA. However, the Department of Labor has addressed how ERISA's fiduciary rules apply to medical loss ratios, rebates that employers receive from their carriers under the Affordable Care Act. While the premium credits are not the same as MMR rebates, for example, the credits from MMR rebates are applied to future premium obligations that are not actually paid out to the employer, so general fiduciary rules should apply in both situations. The Department of Labor establishes that if the employer or participants each pay a fixed percentage of the premiums, the percentage of the rebate equal to the percentage of the cost given to participants if they plan asset under ERISA. County must decide how to use these funds for the exclusive benefit of the plan's participants and beneficiaries, which will be all of our employees. For example, the credit could be shared with participants in the form of a premium holiday, reduced payroll deductions over a period of time, or some sort of benefit enhancement. Last year, when we received the same premium credit, we gave employees a premium holiday for the month of December. Guidance has also indicated that employers typically do pass this employer, pass the employee portion of the credit on to employees in the form of that premium holiday, and I would recommend we do the same thing that we did last year. To do this, health insurance deductions would not be held from employee paychecks for the month of December as that premium holiday. And this would impact employees enrolled in the plan as of November the 30th, 2021, and paychecks received on 12/9 and 12/23, 2021. Questions? And I did include a copy of the high market bill that shows her credit was $197,000.
So the motion, you have just have a premium holiday for December?
Yes, the motion to approve health insurance employee premium holiday for the month of December for existing plan participants.
Okay. I'll also, I'll move that motion to approve the premium holiday date for the month of December. Got a second? Any discussion? Always.
It's all good news.
Yes, you're exactly right. I agree with that. Any, any more discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Financial statements. First page of your financial statements includes cash balances of about 100,000, 2021. I usually just touch on the, the important funds, such as the general fund. As of October 31st, 2021, we had a balance of about $10 million compared to $14 million last year. Now, last year, we didn't process any of the capital outlay fund transfers until the end of the year because we were still in the pandemic, and we left our balance high. Our normal cash balance is around $5 or $6 million, so we're still kind of high. Federal grants fund has a negative cash balance of $38,774. That is part of our cash fund and our grants funds. We are required to pay for those expenditures before we receive reimbursement. So it's not unusual for that to have a negative balance on the books, even though it doesn't have a negative balance with the bank. We will get reimbursed for that. Financial stabilization fund previously had a balance of $200,000. Now have the balance of zero, so we no longer have any funds in our financial stabilization fund. The American Rescue Plan Act, Fund 207, last year had a balance of zero, this year has a balance of 3.28 million as of the end of October 2021. Capital outlay fund, because we're making our transfers out of our general fund into our capital outlay fund, our balance increased from last year of $4 million to $13.4 million. It's about a $9.3 million increase over last year at the same time. The other big increase would be in our impact fee funds. Last year, it had a balance of $6 million, and this year has a balance of $9 million. Federal cash balances at the end of October was $37.2 million compared to $25.9 million at the same time last year. It's about $11.3 million increase, with majority of that being capital outlay fund and the second highest being impact fees. Any questions about cash balances? And the next page is our expenditures by department as of October 31st, 2021. We would expect to see expenditures and our revenues at or below, revenues at or above 33%, and then our expenditures at or below 33%, so that four months divided by 12. Our annualized taxes, we've received $8.6 million at the end of October compared to $8.5 million at the same time last year. It's about a 1% increase, and that's pretty normal. We do receive the majority of our revenue at the beginning of the year. Ambulance fee has a budget of $929,000. That ambulance fee is the amount that we actually provide as income contributions to the volunteer fire departments. And that's a journal entry I don't normally record until the end of January because I don't have the $990 yet. So that, that will come into play later in the year.
So that, you said that for the fire department, it's listed under ambulance fee?
Right, because they're actually collecting it for ambulance services, so we have to list it as ambulance fee. But it's, it's actually paid to the, as a, they keep that money, so that's what that revenue is. Ambulance fee billings are in an actual separate fund. They're included in the general fund. This is in the general fund.
I wanted to understand.
And it's also about the same amount, but it's in a separate fund. Federal grant revenue, we had about 1.1 million in federal grant revenue last year. By the end of October, due to the CARES Act, we don't have much revenue received so far in current fiscal year. That will change in January, once I do our revenue loss transfers, as well as any additional transfers that we have. Gas and oil severance is at 110%. We typically receive that once a year, so I will need to do a budget revision for that to increase it by $1,000. And that has increased slightly over the prior year by about 21%. It's not a big number, it's only $14,000. Horse and dog racing has, shows that we received $81,000. But when I looked at the GL for that, I realized that there was an error in the actual posting of that, so I corrected that in November. The actual revenue was actually $2,700 at the end of October, and that compares to $2,000 at the same time last year. Total occupancy tax is at $230,000 compared to $158,000 at the same time last year. It's a good indication that the economy is starting to recover from the pandemic, since it has about a 45% increase. All of that money is 100% dedicated to other sources. We're required to provide 50% of that to the CDB. And then during the budget, we determine how the rest of it is allocated. It is allocated 45% to parks, 3% to the historical landmarks commission, and 2% to parks and communities. Our property transfer tax is at $532,000 compared to $400,000 last year. About a 32% increase, and it's due to two factors. One would be the change, the market conditions right now as far as housing and properties that are transferring is significantly higher than it was at the same time last year. Then the other change is a result of legislative changes that took place, that took effect July the 1st, 2021. So we should see that revenue increase over the next 10 years by about $1.4 million. It'll increase 10% per year. Table games, video lottery revenue, I'll go over that later because I have an additional handout for that. And then wine and liquor tax shows that it's $86,000. It should actually be $165,000. The error that we noted up here in horse and dog racing is offset by wine and liquor tax. It should have been wine and liquor tax. So if we look at $165,000 compared to $159,000, it's still increasing by about 3.4%. So it's a good indicator that wine and liquor tax is doing well. Total revenues were $12.2 million compared to $13.89, and that's 11% decrease, primarily to the federal grants revenue that we haven't received yet. When looking at expenditures, what I look for is to see which departments are, are, you know, you know, higher than 33%. So the county commission is at 43%, $746,000 in expenditures compared to $804,000. Still lower than it was at the same time last year. But the reason we're at 43% has to do with the timing of how we pay our liability and risk insurance payments. Our liability insurance, we're required to pay that in two installments, with 50% of it being paid on July 1st, and the other 50% of it paid in January, so it looks a little off, even though it's, it's fine. On the next page, offset to the ambulance fee revenue would be in our fire department, I'm sorry, ambulance fee there, should have $1.5 million compared to the same time last year at $2.3 million. Because I haven't recorded that journal entry yet, and I can't record it until I get all the $990s. Total expenditures were $7.9 million compared to $9.2 million at the same time last year. If I take out the expenditures that we haven't, that I haven't recorded for ambulance fee revenue, it's actually pretty flat when you look at it. Transfers to and from other funds, I've already made transfers of 1.5 million to our capital outlay fund from the general fund, a balance from the prior year. I normally make that in probably two installments, I do one at the beginning of the year, and then I do another transfer towards the end of the year, once I'm sure that we don't have any emergencies or unusual situations that we may need it for. So I'll do a second transfer for that at the end of the year. Assessor's valuation fund, that is the amount that the assessor typically reimburses us for the salaries of about seven employees. She does that transfer once a year in June, so that will remain zero until the end of the year. Any questions about any of the expenditures? The next page is our video lottery revenue. And it shows history of video lottery revenue. Fiscal year 12, we hit a high of about $4.3 million, and it has been steadily decreasing since then as Maryland legalized gambling and started opening casinos close to our borders. So in fiscal year 22, we hit a low, sorry, fiscal year, fiscal year 20 is the pandemic year. We hit a low of $2.4 million. Fiscal year 21, we ended the year at $2.5 million. Now, for fiscal year 22, based on the trend that we currently have going on for the first part of the year, we've received 1.4 million in revenue so far compared to 1.2 million in revenue at the same time last year. So we're seeing about a 13% increase, and it's a good indication to me that it's, it's starting to recover from the pandemic. I do anticipate that we will probably need a budget revision for this, and I'll do those budget revisions normally in January. Right now, projecting we'll need about a $900,000 increase in that revenue as a result of the recovery from the pandemic. Another good indicator would be the trend lines that we have at the bottom. The green line is the actual trend line for our actual revenue. That red line is our budget, and then of course, the jagged line, the blue line is our actual. So our trend line is trending up over a 24-month period, and over a 48-month period, it's still pretty flat. So over the last 24 months, trend line is showing that we're seeing significant increases in video lottery revenue, and that's really a good indication that's, that's recovering.
It's not like this anymore.
Exactly. Table games revenue is a much smaller revenue, and you can see that from fiscal year 12, at 12, high of 1.6 million, it decreased to a low. And fiscal year 21, $446,000. At the end of fiscal year 20, I'm sorry, at the end of October, during fiscal year 22, we received $200,000 compared to $133,000 at the same time last year. So it's about a 50% increase. It's a good indication that table games revenue is also recovering after the pandemic. So I anticipate that at the end of the fiscal year, we will see an increase in revenue of about $161,000. I typically don't make that budget revision until January or February, until I have a better picture. But I do anticipate we'll need to increase that budget. For fiscal year 23, we should be able to bring the budget to about $500,000, which is more in line with our historical trends. And then we have our trend line at the bottom, the 24-month period. Our trend line in the last 10 years has never done an increase for table games revenue. So for the 24-month period, which would be, you know, pandemic to current, it is actually increasing. Now, when you look at it over 40-month, 48-month period, it's still decreasing. But to me, the 24-month period gives us a good indication that we're recovering from the pandemic. The next is our building permits and fees. At the end of fiscal year 21, we received $557,000 in revenue. And at the end of September, we received 56, I'm sorry, $5661,000 in revenue. Based on the trends from prior years, or the months that we have over the winter, and then the seasonal spikes that we see in spring and summer, I anticipate that we should end the fiscal year at about $502,000. We only budgeted $464,000, so I think that we'll also need a budget revision to increase building permit revenue in January or February as a result of the trend that we're currently seeing. I expect that for fiscal year 23, we can continue that increasing trend, meaning budget for about $550,000. I did talk with Roger. He said it's still going strong, and the market trend doesn't seem to be slowing at this point. And I just wanted to give you the history, since we have a few new staff members. We hit a high for building permit revenue with fiscal year six of $1 million, and it steadily increased to a low in fiscal year 12, and that was the low of the market. I think we're really doing poorly in the housing market of $163,000. So we're increasing back up. I don't, I'm not sure that we'll hit that high again of $1 million. I think it's pretty close to, to hitting the top of this particular market increase. But you can see that we've increased significantly since fiscal year 12.
Yeah, I'd rather they're not paid credit.
Yes, that was quite clear. I am working on fiscal year 23 revenue, 23 revenue. I am working on fiscal year 23 revenue, 23 revenue projections right now, I just received information from the assessor to develop those, I will have the fiscal year 23 budget charge on probably the first session in December, and that's where the commission establishes the charge that I send out to the departments as far as what we expect of them when they're inputting their fiscal year 23 budget. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I will have fiscal year 22 budget revisions in January based on the current year trends for revenue, and that's everything I have for financial techniques, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Carol, as always.
All right, we're gonna move on to agenda number five, Russell Burgess, come on up, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner, how is everyone?
Very good.
Good.
I'm here, not just as myself, but also with David Deemer from Region 9, how are you, David?
Good, how are you, Jeff?
What I came to speak with you this evening is reference to the Gig Ready Program, local governments in West Virginia have been allocated more than $500 million from the American Rescue Plan Act Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, and for any of them that intend to invest that money in local broadband expansion, what the Gig Ready Initiative will provide is matching state funds for local governments that develop projects to fulfill their broadband investments. For your reference, just with this, the West Virginia broadband funding is based off the US Treasury guidance, which states the construction and deployment of broadband infrastructure designed to deliver service that reliably meets or exceeds symmetrical speeds of 100 million bits per second, so the communities have future-proof infrastructure to serve their long-term needs. In reference to this, within Jefferson County, we are currently aware of at least 2,200 underserved or targeted addresses in Jefferson County that we would be trying to reach. David Deemer of Region 9 has been instrumental in working with the Broadband Committee and looking through all this and working with us, and I would like, if it's okay, to have Mr. Deemer speak if he'd like to add anything to this.
Absolutely.
Hi, thanks for adding us on to the agenda, so what, the region, the reason we're advised to apply for technical assistance is, we don't really have any fiber projects identified in the plans, so they highly encourage from the Office of Broadband, the West Virginia Office of Broadband, to enter in the technical assistance, so to help identify these target areas and create high-level designs and cost estimates to reach these folks that, quite frankly, are underserved, or there's no infrastructure around them. So they will help through the process, the the planning process, the development process, and help, and then seek potential private partners to match and leverage the ARPA funds that you have, so we are highly encouraged to move forward with technical assistance, so, and like I said, and then like Mr. Burgess said, there's roughly 2,200 targeted addresses in Jefferson County that are below the SEC minimum for broadband. So.
So, I don't know if you have any questions, this is a pretty short explanation, but basically, all I'm really asking the commission is to approve us to continue looking for viable projects and reach out for technical assistance, so that we may hopefully be able to qualify for some of these funds that are available. And you'll notice that there's a motion on the bottom, we're gonna have to amend that motion, simply because of some developments that have been made, we were going to ask that we do it with Jefferson, Berkeley, and Morton County, but we know now through, I believe, David, it's the LEED program, correct, that is also in addition to the Gig Ready Program, the LEED program is for internet service providers, and we have a number of them in the area that apparently have been interested and would like to participate, so we're gonna pursue projects on our own, just as Jefferson County. But with that being said, anything, any projects identified or approved will be reviewed at a later time by the county commission to determine if the county's interested in participating. And I can reach into motion or bring it up to you.
I do have a question, how do we determine the 2,200, was that based on speed tests, or how do we determine the 2,200 underserved?
I can answer that one, so actually, we we helped submit data that was proposed, I'm sorry, that was conducted for the actual Jefferson County plan, so there was a number of factors, there was speed tests taken from the West Virginia Broadband Enhancement Council, the survey data that we submitted to them, and also, they took into account the SEC mapping that's available, and they solicited information from the providers and kind of worked with them to see kind of where their infrastructure is, so there's a multitude of factors here that, this is probably the most accurate data that is is available right now across across the country for Jefferson County.
I guess one question I had, the 22,000 you said was underserved?
2,200.
Or 2,200?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Does that include unserved as well?
They are considered underserved or unserved, and if they're underserved, it means they're not getting at least 25 down and three up, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And they have online maps that show these, I can print these out if any of you are interested in seeing the targeted addresses that they have provided us.
All right.
If you want to do that, like I say, reworded the motion to take that up.
I I had it right here, I can, I I made some notes. I'll go ahead and move to have Region 9 file on behalf of Jefferson County for the State Gig Ready Program with a competitive approach to include viable projects that may qualify for the program. Any regional projects identified would be reviewed at a later time to determine the county's involvement. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Russell.
Thank you, and hopefully we bring some projects back to you to address these issues for the county.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're running slightly ahead of schedule, we'll jump ahead to new business, discuss early voting locations, I'll turn turn the floor over to Fisher, Ash.
Yeah, so I could put in an agenda request, I know we have a meeting tomorrow about redistricting and elections are coming around the corner, I know last year, there were waits, and I was just trying to see if there was a larger location we could get for early voting, I had spoken to Mayor Traynor, and he said it would be a possibility to annex in Charles Washington Hall, so I guess I wanted to see if we would be interested in exploring possibly including Charles Washington for early voting.
Are you contemplating two locations, courthouse and Charles Washington, move everything to Charles Washington? Well, I I would like to have input from the election staff on the logistics, because I think it's a big move, I understand, I think, where you're going, maybe it wouldn't be as crowded, but then you have the steps, so it's hard, which would be best.
No, I I can't, I do agree with you, there is some, there's challenges for both locations, but the fact that there's an elevator in Charles Washington, and it's a, it's better ADA compliant than I think courthouse is, in some aspects, and it's not bigger, just to get everybody to speed a little bit more on this, they were trying to come up with a second early.
For state code, we have to have early voting.
Why don't you come on up here and have a seat, so we can hear you, sorry.
Well, state code, we have to have our early voting in the courthouse, Charles Washington Hall would have to be a secondary location.
Okay.
So we can't just move it.
You can't do a courthouse, you can't annex.
Can't do one or the other, you have to do both, if you decide.
Because I I was under the impression we could do a courthouse annex into that, into the Charles Washington, for, to use Charles Washington Hall.
That's how we're allowed to use this room?
Yes, it's called, it's called a courthouse annex.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
I missed that.
Yes, that's all right, yeah.
I'm not against the idea, but I would like more information to check.
I would as well, yeah.
Yeah, and and I think, you know, I think it's great that we have it on here, so we can formally make a motion to move forward to to start this process at least, Nate, do you have anything on this, did you look, I know you were looking?
I I think that you can do it in an annex, the codes says courthouse would be annexed. Another thing that you could do is have the courthouse, you still maintain it at the courthouse, but you could have a satellite location in Charles Washington, and so your, one location would be, the main location would be the courthouse, you only have to have a machine here, and then make Charles Washington a satellite.
Yes.
I knew that, how would you split or determine who votes where, doesn't matter, just another computer or another setup at the?
I think that would be somewhat confusing.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it may be, I explored several possibilities with the satellite.
Well, it's, growing up in Charleston, they have a few areas, so if we could just reach out to them and see how they do it.
Well, yeah, I I'll say, because they do it, I'll probably, maybe I can probably answer that, we we were going to, we looked into that, and both parties have to, both parties have to agree on location, and both parties met.
Did not.
And they did not, okay, one party wanted a location in Shepherdstown, and another party wanted the place in Blue Ridge.
Well, I only see the point of having two locations, if you are gonna have one that's conveniently located somewhere else.
Yeah, right, instead of downtown and parking and all that, too.
Yeah, so so that that was, that was explored, and now, that was, that ran and ran to ground, I guess, and I think Commissioner Ash has a good point to maybe look to a larger location, than just a single location that can accommodate more people than the courthouse, so, yeah, but, yeah, we try.
So, yeah, so if you avoid then having to get the parties to agree if you still maintain a location in the courthouse, that may be problematic for the court.
Yeah, well.
And also, you know, I suppose another possibility would be, you could, if you decided to create an annex in the hall, the commission can be up there, you can make this the voting spot, if there's concern about public access, parking, and this.
Yeah.
And then, you know, one other consideration would just have to be the security.
Yes, I do know, when when the parties were looking at different possibilities, I mean, Nick, you went out and looked at certain areas, and they do have to have a secure Wi-Fi location, I think they will have to install, they'll probably ask Russ to install video cameras to what, to for security, for 24-hour security, and obviously, we'll have, they'll have to have full access with with only, with only our clerks to have full access to that room, and not any anybody else, so, yeah, they, all that was kind of looked at in different locations, and one location that was even looked at, it would, it would not work because of some of, some of the things I mentioned, was the, as being an early learning location, was the new visitor center down in Hops Ferry, but because we, just, things wouldn't work out, but it would have been a great spot. So, but I would, I I think we should probably go ahead and at least explore it and see if we can make it happen, I think it's a great idea.
Well, I guess I'd want to make a motion to explore the logistics of annexing Charles Washington Hall for early voting.
Courthouse annex.
Courthouse annex.
Yes.
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, we're running slightly ahead, we don't have any, anything else other than legal, is there anything on your legal counter that you need to speak out in open sessions?
I have been speaking to our counsel often on regarding the opioid tariff today, so I could see if he could.
We got like five minutes for public.
Well, then, I don't think we need to do it in a minute.
I was, I was trying to, I'm trying to shorten you up, though. So it's, it's, it's six, it's 6:45 in public, if we had something, we could jump in for about five minutes if there's any updates that you have, but if we don't, we can just, we can just wait patiently and.
Yeah, I can tell you regarding the item, item number two, the seller tax amendment issue in the corresponding appeals report, I can just inform you that we've been working toward perfecting the appeal, we, counsel are basically not considering the issue related to consolidating the appeals, because there's at least three, there are three appeals right now, all over really the same general fact pattern, so it certainly would make sense in my mind to consolidate the appeal, and so, counsel, they're discussing that, and I may have something more regarding legal advice on that issue in executive session. There are a couple of other issues related to that, but I did, I think that they would better, be better served in executive session.
Okay. So, so everything you have on here is in executive session, sounds like?
Yes, and I would probably be discussing item number two, three, four, and five, number five.
Say, hit me again to what?
Two, three, four, five.
Two, three, four, five, okay, all right. All right, what we'll do then, we're gonna take a a four-minute break, and then we'll come back, and we'll start public call, and then after that, we'll go into executive session, all right? All right. All right, we're back. We're going to move on. It's uh to tonight, number six, public comment. David's here. You you comment tonight?
Absolutely.
I figured you would come on up, sir. You got three minutes and then in the meantime, we'll see if anybody's online to comment. The flow is yours and we'll start. We have a timer. I think there's a timer over there. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Tab. Justice County resident taxpayer. This doesn't happen very often. I would first like to thank Commissioner Delecton for her asking for more information. This does not happen very often. County Commission usually goes at the pleasure of whatever the parties were at the time of presentation. It's really important to have information. You don't have information, you can't make good decision. So I appreciate your diligence of understanding how important that is. Commissioner Solber, I would like to thank you for extending the Harpa applications. It has not been properly noted. People that could file for this didn't have clue. Nor did I until I had somebody in the other part of the state say, are you seeing what this Harper thing can do? And they're like, no, well. So I'm not up to speed yet. I actually have contacted the State Auditor's Office and they have submitted me the documentation from the federal government that they will be watching everyone on those guidelines. And they asked me to give them any input I could find. And I guarantee you that's going to happen because I already did today and I contacted them yesterday. With that concerned, Harpa money, you've already gotten 1.5 million in revenue loss recovery. So does that mean that you want to give the volunteer fire companies the $920,000 that you took away from them in their budget? They were approved for 1.4 million, almost 1.5. You reduced reduced it down to 490. So if they you have a reduction of revenue and you pulled that money away because you had reduction of revenue, it's time to give back. Also, I've already started the process within the state. Haven't done it with the county yet. The state seems to be a little bit more perceptive on what's going on and to assist them on that. Plus, you have last year, you had on the impact fees, if I'm correct, 6 million. Now you got 9 million. What are you waiting for on this money? The fire companies are in desperate need. So why aren't we looking at that? As far as broadband, there's two ways to fix it. Fiber, satellite. No other way. Don't need no study. This is what works. So again, thank you for your time. I'm sure it's going to be interesting. But I really appreciate you guys sitting down with me that I was not allowed to meet with y'all in executive session to fit some of the stocks in the courts. I am letting the courts know that you refuse to assist in that.
Do we have any anybody online?
I don't have anyone. I'm just raising their hands to get public comments.
All right.
Okay, I have one hand raised. That's for Stacy Tab.
Okay. Goodness, Tab, you have.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. On your agenda for this evening, under the Legals Council's report, it contains two items related to the large scale utility solar. That is, and those include the discussion of legal issues regarding the proposed solar text amendment, including bonding, the comprehensive plan and related matters, and the commissioner's assignment of drafting a new solar text amendment and the presentation of that draft amendment. I've been participating in the meetings involving these solar installations proposed for our county. This has been going on for over a year. It seems like this would be a land user zoning ordinance related amendment to allow this. But it's currently under appeal as stated by Mr. Cochran. Also, the Planning Commission has been tasked tasked with from the county commission here to consider amending the comprehensive plan to clarify and or state that the solar facilities are principal permitted use in the rural and residential zoning districts. So for those who are following the meeting tonight, I just wanted to bring it to their attention as well that the Planning Commission has scheduled a pub public hearing to review the modifications to the comprehensive plan. There are at least 17 changes that have been proposed. That was drafted by the county staff and my notice for participating in these meetings is that there's been very little consideration that given to public input. There was one opportunity that limited the public to three minutes per person to participate in the discussion. And that was what was supposed to be a stakeholders workshop or roundtable meeting. But there was no participation from municipalities, from the Development Authority, from the Farmland Protection Board, or any of those other public agencies that would typically participate in the comprehensive plan and its contents. So there's this public hearing that's scheduled for December 7th at 7:00 PM for the public to once again provide input to these proposed changes. And I really hope that the Planning Commission takes that into consideration. It seems like the rate that this has been going, it's going to continue to cost our our county more in funds on legal expenses and so forth. Challenging what what it it sounds like whenever there are these opportunities for input for what most of the citizens are requesting for this to be more of a conditional use or there to be some type of restrictions. So mainly, I just I hope that people do participate in the December December 7th public hearing that the Planning Commission has scheduled at this time for those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anybody else that raised their hand? All right, there's an objection, close public. All right, there are no objections, we'll close public comment.
No, Commissioner Solber, I did want to just make a comment on my item number one. As you know, we have engaged the services of a consultant and I just wanted to update you and the public to be interested that the consultant has just been in the process of gathering information. It's kind of a long process because they are gathered and are gathering a variety of information about the about the emergency services issue. And they will be in the process soon compiling that information and coming back to give us some information. Then you report, but it's a lot of information, a lot of working on their part. So the actual reporting may not come to you until sometime in January.
Do you want to talk about that in executive session? Okay, all right. All right, I'll go ahead and move to executive session for items number two, three, four, and five to receive legal advice from our current Nikki Cochran.
Item number four, two, five. Issues related to construction plan and purchase sale.
Yes, sir. All right, do I have a second? Any discussion?
I have a point of order.
Sure.
Involving executive session. Commissioner Solber, you usually recuse yourself from anything with the solar text stuff. Well, from what I found from the Ethics Commission, you need to recuse yourself from executive session as well.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
We're good. Welcome back. It's 7:53. We are out of executive center. I'll move that we come out of the executive center in just a second.
Sorry.
Any discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there are no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you.